Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion that we, can I please get a motion that the agenda for the January 12th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented? Counselor Shannard will make that motion. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the November 24th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented? Sorry, Counsel Wilkinson makes that motion. All those in favor? Good. Thank you. Motion carried. All right, moving on to Corporate Services, the Multi-Use Recreational Facility Debencher Bylaw. Is that you, Ms. Bitner, you're presenting that to us today?
Yes, I will be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the, the debenture is the last sort of piece of our funding model for our multiplex project. Just bringing it forward to council's attention. With, with the debenture, the MGA states that we must have the debenture bylaw in place before any construction is started. So I just wanted to bring it to the attention that this is something that we still do have to do before we actually have, you know, like a backhoe hit the ground, so to speak. The bylaw that's attached has been prepared in our, in our usual fashion with the, with the wording and has actually been approved by the Capital Finance Authority. So we know that when we do present it, it can go straight ahead. The process is that we would have a first reading at a, at a council meeting. Then it is advertised for 15 days before it can come back and have second and third reading. And from there, it's another month until it's actually considered a valid bylaw. So we just have to be aware that we have a, you know, sort of six to eight week process there to make sure that we actually have a valid bylaw before we actually start any construction on the project. The debenture's been prepared for $9 million, which was what we've had in our, in our funding model since, I think, since very early on. I'll open it up to any questions.
Questions from council? Counsel buyer?
Hi, thanks. Through the chair to Ms. Bitner. Do we have any recent updates on what that would be for tax increase on an average household for a $350,000 home?
Certainly. For about a $350,000 home, at the moment, we're using about 3% in our modeling. The actual percentage is a little lower at the moment, but we always use 3% as, as sort of the general what we've been using. And that would be around $122 a year for, added to the taxes for, for that debenture. And one other thing about debentures is the, this will be a 30-year debenture. The thing about them is that it does actually spread out the, the cost of that facility over future people as well. So people that move to the community will have that on their taxes. So you're actually getting the people that are coming into our community in the future will also sort of be contributing towards that facility.
Counselor Shannard?
Oh, yes. Can you guys hear me? The, one of the questions was asked 3%. Do we know what the operational cost increase would be? So it's approximately 3% to 4%, depending on your house. Do we know what the operating cost, what would be a percentage increase on that?
I don't actually have that with me right now, but I can certainly get that information for you. I only sort of brought for the, the debenture information tonight, but I can certainly let council know what, what that would be.
Counsel Sorenton?
Yes, through the chair to administration. Point four talks about the municipality shall levy and raise in each year municipal taxes sufficient to pay the indebtedness. Does that mean we can't raise or pay for that debt with other means such as like utilities or like, like we did with the wastewater treatment plant?
I see what you're saying, yes. I think we can certainly look into that. I can go back to capital finance and see if there's a way that we can rework that a little bit so that it's not quite so specific to taxation. So that's actually a good point. I'll put a note down and see if we can make that a little broader. So if we did want to do something that way, we certainly could.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel buyer?
Thank you. Through the chair to administration, two questions. On page one, it shows the outstanding debt of the municipality as of December 31st, 2019. I was just wondering if the 2019 was a typo or if it was supposed to be 2020, as well as what happens if we're, I don't know, $5,000 over that 70 million? Does that just come out of, come back to council at that time? Or what would, what would happen if we were over that by just a little bit?
For the, the first question, the 2019 isn't a typo. It's, it's the latest financial statements that you have. The 2020s haven't been done yet. If we were to delay the first reading of this until later into the year, which, which is a possibility, it's up to, to council on that. And 2020s were completed by the time we sent this debenture bylaw, and we would update that to show 2020's amount. Yes. Sorry, what was the second question?
Thanks. Through the chair to administration. If, so we're borrowing this for $9 million, and if there was a chance that we had to come up with additional funds, how would, what would, just what would that look like? I, I know that we're quite firm on that, but you know, it's hard to be exact sometimes, so.
If we decided, if it was substantial enough that we decided we wanted a, to, it's, it's another buy, another debenture, we would have to go through this process again to draw down another debenture. Otherwise, we would go back and find ways through reserves, et cetera, to, to, to cover that extra. The bylaw has to be passed before we start construction, but we don't necessarily have to draw it down. It just needs to be in place. So even if we don't draw this down for, you know, a year or 18 months into construction, it would still be classed as, as a valid bylaw, but we wouldn't be able to change that amount unless we went back. There is a clause in the MGA that if the, so long as the total project isn't increased by more than 15%, you can do a slight adjustment to your debenture without going back and re-advertising. But that's sort of, you know, if, if it goes over by more than, more than 15%, then you have to go back and redo your, your bylaw.
I, I have a question. Mrs. Bitner, what is, so is that the same if by chance, when this comes, A, if we come under, so our cost of the project comes under, or if by chance something happens where we do end up with additional grant funding or we end up with donations? Are we able to decrease this amount of this debenture without any penalties?
That's the thing. That's why I think we wouldn't draw this down. I'm thinking until we know that we need the debenture. There is always a penalty if you pay it back early. I would always figure out that difference. Is the penalty going to be less than the interest we would pay on this debenture? So you'd have to look at those things before we draw them down. I know we did that on one of our projects. We had a lot of people prepay their portion of, of it on a local improvement, and it was actually worthwhile us paying back some of that debenture. So we can do that, but I would always definitely check that the penalty is, is not more than what we would have paid on, in the normal course of the debenture.
Sorry. Counsel Wilkinson?
All right. I just was just reaffirming that I remember the county saying if it goes over 70,000, 70, yeah, thousand, 70 million, sorry, they will not be responsible for any part of that. So definitely it would be our own debt. And to Ms. Bitner, just a question. Did we at one time put money aside for a fine art center?
Sorry, what was that? I didn't quite hear.
Did we put money aside in an account for, like a fine art center?
Yes, we did. We do have $2 million in a reserve to go towards a, a cultural center. We do have that, yes.
Okay, then I just ask this question. Being that I think the premise of that is that would be built after we've completed the current facility that we're working on. So would it be feasible or could we use that $2 million and then pay that back at the end instead of borrowing nine, borrow seven? Because we'll pay more interest than we're going to get, we'll pay more interest on the loan than we will get in interest on the money.
If we do use that $2 million, we would then have to, to budget that $2 million going back. It would, it would drop the debenture amount down, and then we do, we would just be funding that, that project, including that $2 million. So paying it back would then be us building that reserve back up again after the fact.
Right, but I mean, we could have it in the span of the time that this building's going to be completed. We could have it built up again. We could just build that into it, but we just, at the time, wouldn't be borrowing that extra money, is the way I see it.
I think we, we did discuss that. This is, of course, up, up to council. If they wish to go that route, we can do that. We can draw that $2 million out of that reserve and bring our debenture down.
And again, if we get donations and stuff, well, what a great thing that we could just put it back into our $2 million instead of having to readjust and pay the penalty. It's just the way I see it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other, Counsel Shannard?
Sarah, just one question. Like, we're bringing this debenture forward now. Is there any urgency of bringing it forward? Do we gain anything by waiting a while? Because right now, with all the COVID going on and businesses struggling, we are moving forward with it, but can we delay it? Because I believe you said it's eight to six weeks before we can make it happen. And if we're not planning on building until almost this time next year doing sod turning, is there any reason why we have to do the debenture now?
No, we definitely don't, do not have to start the process now. This, this was just a, an exercise to let you know that this is still something that does need to be done. And definitely before any construction starts on the project, whether that be later this year or early next year, we're not quite, you know, whenever the actual construction starts. So there's, I, I definitely do not have to bring this back next week, for example. But we do need to keep it in, in our minds that this, that this does have to be done, and it does take about an eight-week kind of period before it becomes a valid bylaw.
Mayor Sahara?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks for your work on this, Sarah, and, you know, we're getting a $70 million project here and only borrowing $9 million. I know it seems like a lot of money, and it absolutely is a lot of money. But for municipal projects, I was talking to a mayor in Southern Alberta. They did a rec facility around $30 million, and they borrowed 13. And we're building a 70 million, only borrowing 9. He was looking at me and asked me why we haven't started yet. So I think that, I think we have some flexibility within our, our finances, that if we don't want to borrow that amount, that we certainly can look at some alternatives. I wouldn't want to push that button just quite yet. I, there's so many unknowns with what's going on with COVID in the economy. And we've been hit with a couple of significant infrastructure failures that I would certainly want to see that we have money in our reserves available for those sorts of things and not putting all of our eggs in one basket. One of the, I think, important things to keep in mind is this is going to be a facility that's going to serve our community for generations, and it's important that future benefactors of this facility are contributing to the actual building of the facility, and that's what this debenture is allowing us to do. So I think that, I think that this is a good way forward. We have quite a bit of money in reserves we'll be using. We may have more money in the future as well. So I think there's possibilities there to, to adjust this, but I, I, I think it's too soon to make those calls at this point in time. I don't know what the benefits would be to waiting other than, you know, the public will have a chance to decide whether or not they support this or not support this. I think that we need to get it done sometime before summer, but I don't think it has to be immediate. As well as the other point I was going to make, it slipped my mind. So I'll just leave it at that.
Counsel Sorenton?
Yeah, through the chair to council, I would just recommend that we do proceed with this tonight or as soon as possible. Eight weeks comes pretty fast, and the construction season could start earlier if this weather continues. So I don't see any reason to slow the process down. If we have this ready for, you know, the sooner the better. And like we said, we can always adjust it later if, if it's, if it's the wrong number.
Counsel buyer?
Thanks. I also support Counsel Sorenton's comments there. I, I don't see any reason to, to delay it. And this is just one of the steps that we have to go through to do that, to proceed with the multiplex. So I would prefer to just continue moving along. Thanks.
Question to Ms. Bitner. Just, just sorry, kind of going back to my first question with clarity here. When we pass this bylaw, the amount that we have put in that debenture, there's no penalties or anything if we change that, like the bylaw itself? We can change this if, you know, we pass this bylaw, and then when we actually go to get the debenture and go through the finances, we decide for 7 million, there's no penalty then?
That is correct. No, there's no penalty if, if we change it. It's only if we've actually drawn the debenture.
Drawn the money. Yes, yeah, just.
Some off, yes.
Yeah, just clarify that. Just, I'm just clarifying that because then to me, I agree with Counsel Sorenton and Counsel buyer. We have to do this either way. That money is not, the, the amount can be changed. And I definitely agree. I think I would prefer to look at that date, that money closer to the date. Look at our, where our reserves are and know where things are going with COVID. I agree with the mayor that I do think we have to be careful with our reserves right now, knowing that we could be hit with quite a few things. So I think that's important, but I know this bylaw has to happen, whether it happens now or it happens in six months. It has to happen. So I would support moving forward with it sooner than later, but under the premise of looking at that 9 million. Okay. Mayor Sahara?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other thought finally came back to my mind through to Ms. Bitner. The current debt that we have in the town of Edson as of 2019 is 12.9 million. I think probably by the end of this last calendar year, 2020, it'll be closer to 12. That is all debt that's supported by off-site levies and local improvements. That's not funded through any tax, general taxation. Is my understanding that's correct?
The majority, well, a lot of it is, a lot of the amount of the debentures is local improvements. The big one, of course, we have in there is the wastewater treatment plant, which is funded through, there is some off-site levy on there, but there's also through the amount that's taken off the utility bills every month is helping to pay that debenture.
Okay.
Are local improvements.
The reason I bring that up is just so people don't think that because we're paying down debt, all of a sudden we have some room in our taxation. Because that, our taxation isn't currently going towards that. There's other fees and, and off-site levies and those sorts of things going towards that. So I think that's something that we also need to keep in mind. Also, if I recall correctly, when Hillendale was built, $11 million was borrowed over five years. So that's been all paid off. And so that shows that we do have the financial capability to borrow these types of amounts of money. And, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any final questions? Ms. Bitner?
So to move forward, at what point shall I bring this back? I could wait until after we're a bit further into our year-end and see what our actual reserves look like, and then bring it back for first reading at that point, or would you like to actually start that process straight away? Just some, just some direction on, on that from, yes, sorry.
What, can I see a show of hands who would like it to come back right away?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the executive office, staff appreciation items, ideas. Mr. McCombe?
Thank you and good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. I was tasked with researching and presenting some ideas with which, or that council could utilize to present their gratitude to staff for the .9 schedule that occurred in, in 2020 due to the COVID crisis. This was, these options were, were discussed at length amongst the entire senior leadership team. I think each of us in that group has, has certain things that, that we prefer more than others. I won't try to prejudice you to, to the ones that I prefer. You have the document. I would, I will just allow you to ask me any questions or, or make any comments that you see fit.
All right, I will open it up to council. Counsel Shannard?
Through the call, and just so I can understand that it says a .9 schedule for the summer 2020, permit staff to work a .9 schedule but get full, full money. But if I'm misunderstanding, that's our regular season. So if COVID is done and we have full staff back, wouldn't we want to get most of the work done? Because I mean, it's the unknown COVID, but I'm a little confused on why from May to August we're going to cut staff back even though COVID's not in place, because that's when we do most of our work in town.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counsel Shannard. It, it is certainly your option. This is, what I was tasked with was, was finding ways that, that council could express some extra appreciation to staff for the .9 schedule. So all of these suggestions are by default gratuitous. They are, they, they are meant to be generous. So yes, in fact, with, with that particular option, people would be working a .9 schedule but receiving pay for, for a 1.0. That would be during the summer months. That particular option is, is not unheard of. Other organizations do it, not, not in that way where that extra one day every two weeks is, is paid for, but the University of Calgary, where I worked for a while, for example, does, does have an arrangement where staff can choose a .9 schedule in the summer. I find that people generally enjoy that, enjoy that privilege.
Counsel Sorenton?
All right, through the chair to council. Looking at the options here, my, my preference, without hearing your guys' thoughts yet, my preference would be the increase to active living allowance. I think that shows our appreciation as well as encourages active living and improvements to physical and mental health. So I think that's a win-win-win. Thank you.
Counsel buyer?
Thanks. Through the chair to Colin. So my, my first question was, are these ideas listed in order of preference or are they just in random sequence? And as well, if you were going to go to, if we chose to go to the .9 schedule, would that mean that the landfill hours would change over the summer? And, and does this apply to both unionized and out of scope employees?
Thank you. Through the chair to Counsel buyer. No, these, these are presented in totally random order. There, again, I, I would say that different members of the senior leadership team have their favorites. Not, not everyone prefers the, the same group, so they're all listed with their pros and cons, right? Your second question, Counselor, cut out there for a minute, something about the summer months?
Right. So if we went with the .9 schedule, would that mean the landfill hours would change for the summer months? And then is, does this apply to both unionized and out of scope employees?
The, the landfill hours, you know, I, I might ask Mitch to chime in on that. I, I think there could be the potential for some modification there. I, I think we did need to amend during the COVID schedule a little bit, if I recall correctly. Yes, this is intended to apply to all staff. My understanding is that I was tasked with coming up with a, a thank you that would be issued to all staff. So all of, all of these ideas are, are along those lines.
Mayor Sahara?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Colin, for your work and the senior leadership, leadership teams' work on this. I reviewed the ideas, and I, I was actually really surprised, pleasantly surprised of the options that were outlined here. Personally, for, for me, I would prefer five wellness days in 2021. I don't think that we can go through another summer of having staff working a 0.9 schedule, especially from May to August, maybe for July and August, but not for that length of time. And I think wellness days gives people the flexibility on whether or not they want to use them or use them for things that are important to them for their families as a way to say thank you on behalf of council and taxpayers for the sacrifices they made last year. I'm not entirely opposed to doubling the active living allowance, but I do think that there are employees that may not benefit from that as much. And then, of course, there's going to be a cost implication to that. But if, if there is a cost implication, then I would suggest I would have to come from the COVID-19 recovery reserves. So my first choice would be the wellness days. My second choice would be the active living allowance.
Counsel Shannard?
Okay, mister, hang on to, mister mayor, hang on to your chair, because I agree with you on the five days of wellness. Just to clarify, these are paid days, correct?
Yes.
So if they are paid days, I'd be in favor of that, because I do agree that our staff did work through, and so did everyone else do. Everyone else did through COVID. So something like that would make sense to me. They can choose to take them when they, they like. So they are paid days. It's not horrible, and it'd be fair. So I would have to agree on that.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Okay, when I looked this over, to me, it was breaking the collective agreement with the QB people because everybody negotiates very hard to get the things in the collective agreement. So it'd be very odd to be offering them an extra five days. I really did like doubling the active living allowance. I thought that's a win-win. But again, that is a collective agreement issue, so I can't agree with that. The one that, that I would have to agree with is the universal access to repsol place. I don't think that that touches the collective agreement, and I think it would benefit everyone in a positive way, that they can get some exercise. So that's my choice. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Counsel buyer?
Thanks. Through the chair to Acting CEO, Ms. Bitner. If we choose to go in a direction that, that contradicts what the collective agreement currently says or enhances what the collective agreement currently says, that doesn't put us in a situation in the future that we would be forced into offering that at that time, that, that this would be a standalone, one-time thing as a thank you for, for all the sacrifices that they took last year. Is that correct?
That's right. With the, and Colin can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but anything that would be in, in contradiction or sort of not necessarily in the collective agreement, we would approach the union and get a, a letter of understanding for something like that to, to be able to sort of amend, I guess, the, some of the things that might be in the collective agreement there. I believe we had to do that with the .9. So it's not that if it's, if it's in the agreement or not in the agreement, we can't do anything. We can always approach the union and, and discuss that with them.
Yes, I'll corroborate that. The union is highly unlikely to say no to something gratuitous. The, the, the only thing we would, the only thing, the only condition we would have for ruling that would be that they try and present an estoppel argument later on in the game to, to argue past practice or. try and present an estoppel argument later on in the game to to argue past practice or to try and retain that benefit. I don't anticipate that being a problem.
Okay, I'm I I would definitely be in support of the wellness days. I I love the idea of the .9 for the summer schedule, but I do agree. I think if we end up especially, God willing, COVID has slowed down and we are back in open. I do think that usually in the summertime, that is when we're quite busy. And since we have been closed, I think we will be busier with people just being out more and stuff, hopefully. So I would support the wellness days. I also would support the active living allowance being doubled. But I do see the cons of not everybody accessing that and a little bit of the budgetary. The purpose of the .9 was to decrease our budget. So there's just a little bit of that. If we're adding anything, the wellness days allows us to do it without any increase to our budget. But if that were the choice, definitely, I would want to see it come out of the COVID reserve. Mayor Sahara, you had had your hand up there and then Counselor Scharard.
Counselor Bevan had his hand up and he has spoken yet, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counselor Bevan, I'm sorry. You you trumped them all.
No, no problem, no problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing as we're rolling this out here and that, we're looking at it. I guess, you know, we're picking for all our employees and that. Would there be a chance that we can get this out to our employees, have them give us an input of what they would like to see or do? And that gives us, you know, a chance to make our decision based on what they would like. And I know not everybody is going to be on the same page, but it gives us a little more information of what they like and not what we like.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Bevan. Yes, we we certainly could find a way to pull our employees, do a survey monkey kind of thing. The only thing I would caution is that is that some of these things have have budgetary implications. And if the and if the employees, for example, were to overwhelmingly decided, for example, that they wanted to double the active living allowance, even that even though that money would come from the reserve, if if 80% said they liked that and then council decided that they didn't, that would cause some morale issues that that we would now have to go back and and deal with. So my anticipation is is that these are highly unique, highly personal, that you might see a fairly even spread among two or three of them and but if if that is what council wants, we could certainly do that for you.
I Counselor Bevan, I had thought along that ways, too. I do think going to what you had said there, Mr. McComb, I think if we were to do that, I think it would have to be only options we're willing to support. So I think, you know, for us to if we were to take a survey out, for us to kind of say, we would be willing to support these two, three things. If there's things that were definite, no, I don't even think they should be on that survey. So sorry, going back to Mayor Sahara.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Bevan, for that thought. I would support doing something like that. And as Counselor Curry said, I think we would have to narrow it down to the things that would be acceptable. You know, I think wellness days, the doubling of the active living allowance or universal access to repsol, I think those are all options that I would be willing to to support based on the input from employees. And it gets them involved in the process as long as we're willing to listen to to what they what they have to say. So that's that's where I would land on that. And I do want to point out that our employees gave up more than just the 0.9 schedule last year, and they did so with with extreme grace. They also gave up a lot of health-related and wellness-related activities last year, all sorts of cuts into their their budgets that they would benefit from. So I think this is a really great way of saying thank you this year. So.
Counselor Scharard.
I jumped the gun and forgot to ask a very important question. If all the staff took the five individual days, we have a rough idea what that would cost us?
Through the chair to Counselor Scharard. Nothing except some productivity. The the value of of doing it in this fashion, going with the five days above and beyond the .9 summer schedule, one of the benefits of that is that managers have the the freedom, the leisure to say no to certain days here and there and to say yes to other days. So we can basically arrange it so that those operational disruptions are barely noticeable if they're noticeable at all by the residents of Edson. But this would be, it would come from days that you're paying them anyway. So it would not cost you anything on top of, you know, in terms of what's already been budgeted, what's already been approved.
Counselor Sorensen and then Counselor Bevan.
All right, through the chair to council. The comment was made earlier that the .9 proposal is not highly desirable because we have a lot of work to do this summer, and I completely agree with that comment. But I'm a little confused why giving people everyone a week off is going to not cause the same problem. So I can't support the five wellness days. Perhaps a lower number, but I think we have a lot of work to do this summer, and I think we need as much productivity as we can. I would support, however, going to employees and asking for their preference for council-supported options. Thank you.
Counselor Bevan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, you know, I'm still in favor going out to our employees here and that. We seem to have two or three items that we picked in that. And if we want to just put those on a table to them, then let's do it. We make a decision. Let's do it. Or we go with the whole list here and that. But I would definitely like them to have a say because, you know, sometimes they don't get a say. We 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 have to go ahead and do what we got to do, and it doesn't always go over. But we have a chance right now to be able to talk to our employees and say, hey, you know, we appreciate what you've done for us throughout the year, you know, the changes you've made, the hardships and everything else. And this is what we're looking at doing, you know, how do you feel about it? And I think we would get a lot of them saying, you know, this way or this way. And I'm not afraid of the them coming back and saying this and that because when it comes down to we'll listen to them, but we still got to make the decision, which, you know, was best for for everybody.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Yeah, when we're talking, it doesn't cost when you have people off work. It does. It's like giving them a raise, and that is money spent of taxpayers' money. And at this time, I agree that all of our employees have have done a great job, and they've also gone down to .9. Already, our out-of-scope people are getting 30 days holiday, five days to volunteer. So then we'd add five wellness days on top of that. To me, I feel we're answerable to our taxpayers, and I don't think that they are in a position that they want to support these types of things. So that's my opinion.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks. Through the chair to council. I would be in support of letting the staff maybe pick if we pick the top three that we'd be willing to support to see which would be most favorable. I'm not in favor of the paid nine summer schedule just because it's right in the middle of summer. But I would be in favor of the wellness days because that is my understanding could be spread throughout the entire year, which in my mind would have less service implications. And not everybody does things during the summer. I'm a little hesitant on the double doubling doubling the active living allowance because we did do this to save money and now we're spending extra money. But if it's not, if I'm not mistaken, most of the staff lost their living allowance last year when we made the COVID budget. So I can definitely see why that would be an act of appreciation. And then and then maybe the repsol place as well, if we're to pick the top three. But those are just my thoughts.
Thank you. Just a few other things I do have about with the wellness days. I I think my only preference around the wellness days, if that was something that were to be picked, there would need to be some parameters around it. Kind of my big thing being I I would have concerns with somebody adding five days to their holidays. So all of a sudden, people are taking, you know, three weeks holidays, two weeks holidays. I think the purpose of those is not meant so that people can take an extended long, which unfortunately, I think a lot would like to do. But that is where productivity definitely is a concern. So I think if those five days were to go, I think there would be definitely. My other concern is with five days, people could use it to just take a .9 for the summer months. So I would want to make sure, Ms. Gomi had talked about that, like it would have to be with manager approval and productivity. So I get that and would want that. I also do want to make sure that if that's what's put in there, managers are using that as a reason not to give them out because they do need to be given out. So I just think if that was something that went went forward, just making sure that it is, knowing that we want to ensure that it's not something where it is taken away from the taxpayers and service. Are people feeling comfortable that we could put, is everybody in support of taking it back to the staff for survey? Can we start there? Thumbs up. Do people have three things? Are there are there things that are definitely off the table? That's super easy. Off, everybody's in agreeance that the .9 is off the table?
Yes.
Yep. Workplace enhancement and swag is off the table? Yeah, I think we all. So are we looking at saying wellness days, double the active living and universal? Is everybody comfortable with those going out to the staff? Enough of us? Yeah, okay. All right. Any final comments on it? Counselor Sorensen.
Can we have a discussion whether it needs to be five days? Can we can we discuss that?
Mayor Sahara.
Yeah, so I think one of the comments made by Counselor Curry was that staff could use it as a 0.9 schedule for the summer months. It wouldn't be as drastic as outlined here in the memo because those were only five days. So if you wanted to as a 0.9, that'd be only for July and August instead of not from May to August. I'm in support of of five days. My preference would be this is targeted towards union employees. Management gave up a lot, too, but they also have recently received a nice change in how vacation is is allocated, and they have additional flexibility within their schedules. So the purpose of me bringing the notice of motion was specifically to say thank you to our union employees who sometimes I think get forgotten about. So that's where I'm at. I'm fine with five days myself personally, because those are going to be utilized throughout the year. And and there could be some oversight with management deciding what they need for operational effectiveness.
I just will comment. I will not support anything that is a divide between the union and management, mainly being a part of the reason why the vacation stuff was brought up for the management team was that there is numerous things in the union that out-of-scope employees do not get, such as overtime, such as staff pay, all of those different things. So there there was a reason, and when that was brought to us, that was a big deal about why that was brought in. And I think by doing that, all we do as a council is to continue to create a negative divide between the union and management staff. And I don't think that's our role, and I think it's something we need to be aware of. So I would not support if this was a staff appreciation when it comes to that .9 and the pay cut. That's not why. I did not vote on the new change to the holidays to that vacation with anything to do with that .9 schedule. So this is a appreciation for taking a .9 schedule and a pay cut. And all staff took a .9 and a pay cut, and that is not why I supported the vacation pilot. So I think those are two completely separate situations. So for me, I I won't support anything that divides them. So that's just my comments on that. As for the five days, I can support that. Counselor Wilkinson.
Yes, I have a different opinion. I did think when Mayor Sahara brought this forward in the first place, it was to sort of counteract that we had taken into account the extra things that management had done for us. And now we were feeling that we should also try to look into the union part. So I would support it if it was just for QP, if it was in the scope of their collective agreement.
Ms. Bittner.
I just want to remind counsel when we were bringing forward the vacation pilot, that was more linked to the the fact that we as the out-of-scope staff were at that 42nd percentile of the of the salaries. It's not really linked to the .9 at all. It just happens to be happening at the same time, which is is blurring those lines a little bit. So I just wanted to just to remind counsel of that of that that the sort of division between those two things that have been brought forward.
Thank you, Ms. Bittner. I was trying to remember that percentage when saying that. Mr. McComb? And then Counselor Bevan. Mr. McComb, you're on mute.
Happens to me at least once a day. I I would like to reiterate and support the CIO's remarks that the context for the for the vacation schedule was about competitiveness and and that was not driven even to benefit our staff so much, maybe in an indirect sense, but to benefit the taxpayer by finding better, cheaper ways to to continue to attract higher and higher quality of candidates down the road. And it was a pilot program to test that theory. I won't go into it at length. I would just say that I would not advise that council ponder a thank you that is only directed at union staff.
Counselor Bevan.
Thank you. Yeah, I could support the five days, and I agree with the the chair here that, you know, we can always put some parameters around it, too. If we need be, if it comes back as that's what they want. I mean, we know we're going to do something for them. It doesn't have to be right this minute. It comes in two or three weeks or a month. At least we get a good chance to look at it. And again, if we want to put parameters around if it comes back to the five wellness days, I think that's, you know, what we could definitely look at.
Counselor Byer.
Thanks. Through the chair to council. I would be in favor of the five wellness days with the parameters, as Deputy Mayor Curry had mentioned. I don't think I would want any staff member to take them all at once. I think the wellness days are intended to have, you know, a small break. And I I think that that would be an appropriate way to use it. And yeah, I think though I'm in favor of having it for both unionized and non-unionized staff as well. Thanks.
Okay. So are, sorry, Counselor Sorensen.
Through the chair to council, I could support four days. I would give people two long weekends, and I think that would be a real benefit to the employees. I do support the idea that it should be applied to all employees as well. Thank you.
Well, Counselor Sorensen, you consider a long weekend Friday and Monday, hey? Counselor Wilkinson.
Okay, I think I mentioned this before, but I really do appreciate what the staff has done. And what I would really like to see is putting on some nice affair for them with council, actually doing the work. And it would be nice to say thank you to them because we do appreciate them very much.
Thank you. Mayor Sahara.
Yeah, so I'm fully in support of moving forward with with going to the employees with those three options. Certainly, I don't think four or five days. I don't think there's a big difference there and for all employees. And yeah, if we ever get through this COVID thing, I definitely want to do another appreciation event, which unfortunately, got canceled last year because of what was going on with COVID.
Okay, let's wrap this up. Ken, are we in agreeance that we can go forth to the knowing that what comes back from our staff, we're going to have another conversation, conversation about this again? Are we in agreeance to go forward to the staff with the three ideas? Are we in agreeance to go forward to the staff with the three ideas? Wellness days, we'll leave it at five for now. That conversation might come back up. Um, double the active living allowance and universal access to Repsol Place. Show a thumbs up. I have enough thumbs. Okay, Mr. McComb, do you have enough information?
Yes, I, I just want to clarify something because we didn't look into Repsol enough. And I, I just want to make sure that it doesn't get lost in the fine print. Um, that the proposal would be to open up Repsol to staff and their families. Is counsel comfortable with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I do have enough information.
Perfect, we would just be happy to open Repsol Place too.
Period.
Right? All right, Kay, thank you very much for that, Mr. McComb. All right, moving on to infrastructure and planning, uh, development securities policy. If Ms. Darling join, joining us.
So I'm going to share my screen to give you a presentation, but, um, I haven't been working in the office, so my computer is a little slow. Let's see if I can make it function. And. Here we go. Alrighty. So I am here tonight to continue the conversation on development in our community. Um, we are going to be asking for your feedback and comments. So in your package, I included the existing policy and the policy that I drafted with Bridget before she left. A mouse. Um, so just a little bit of an outline, um, just introduction to give you a brief back, a brief background on, uh, what we looked at. Um, we'll compare our current policy and our, and my proposal. Um, and then some alternatives for you, and then I'll open the floor for any questions. So, um, I, we've identified parts of the process that can change to provide more effective service to align with the strategic priorities. Um, the first, um, over time, we found that the existing policy requires some clarification in order to, to move, in order to be more efficient and effective in applying securities to the developments. Uh, the second, our basic fees that exist create situations where we feel the amount we're requesting is maybe too high or sometimes too low. But mostly we end up in situations where we're having conversation around how much to charge because our policy doesn't provide enough clarity. Um, the third, our current policy doesn't allow for any discretion to the amount of security, uh, deposit. It only allows us to add additional deposit requirements, doesn't allow us to take away or waive. And the fourth, um, we want our policy to reflect our organization's commitment to being development friendly and still ensure that the risks associated with the developments are protected. So if we compare both, um, you can see, I'm not going to read out what's on my, um, on my, on the screen here, sorry. Um, so you can see, if you looked at both documents, um, you can see that the document changed entirely. We changed its layout, we changed its numbering sequence to be more in line with how the organization wants policies to be viewed so that they're, um, so that they're all similar in nature. Um, but the major change that we're proposing with this policy is the change to fees. We're proposing a more clearly defined range of fees to allow for clarification on what to apply and when. This would also make the development process more friendly to the developers who we work with. Um, so to move forward, um, we're asking for your feedback on your preferred approach to our development securities policy, whether you'd like to, um, you'd like to see us keep the policy the way it is or adopt, um, the new policy as it sits, or if you have any feedback to make changes to the draft, um, that we can incorporate that would align more with your strategic priorities. And that is my presentation, any questions?
Okay, I will open it up to counsel. And Ms. Darling, I might need you to get you to, um, stop sharing just so I can
Oh, yeah.
See my councilmates, thank you. I can't see them. Um, Mayor Sahara?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Curry, and thank you, uh, Julia for, uh, doing this presentation. And I think it is, uh, long overdue. Um, and I'm, I'm very pleased to see the more simplified process and clarity. Um, as you know, Ms. Darling, and I think that, uh, administration is aware, we had a few incidences over the last year, particularly with demolition, uh, in which an absorbent amount of money was being requested for demo of a property that I think was in the public interest. And, um, that property owner contacted me, and luckily we were able to, uh, figure something out. Uh, but, uh, the clarification and language, I think, is, is really important. Um, and so I would like to thank you for the work that you have done on this, uh, as well as I'm sure Ms. Lemieux was involved, uh, before, uh, before the end of the year. Um, I would just add, and I'm not sure which area this would be, um, because I didn't have it noted down here. But to give the development officer the ability to waive or reduce fees if it's deemed in the public interest as well. So, uh, sometimes you may be dealing with a property that's unsafe, um, and it may be in the public interest that, uh, securities are not required in order to move that process along quicker. Uh, that would be my only comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Wilkinson?
Through the chair to Ms. Darling, I really would like to thank you very, very much for the work that you've done, uh, with this. When I ran for council six years ago, it was because of the policies we had in our development department in the town. And this is a huge improvement, I really appreciate it. I hope somewhere that we get that, uh, approval for building houses in three days as it is in the county rather than ninety days that we have now. It would certainly help us get development done. And I just really appreciate the work you put into this and Bridget, of course, too. So thank you.
Counselor Shannard?
Okay, I keep fading in and out, so I'm not hearing all of it, but I do appreciate the draft. And again, when we hit the lightning, I agree with the mayor, these, uh, number figures, someone would have to have the ability to change them because like on commercial development where it's twenty to fifty thousand, if you're doing a five million dollar project or you're doing a half million dollar project, the money amount is the same. So depending if the project is too big, they may choose not to finish it and just say, keep the twenty, twenty thousand dollars. So the ability to change these numbers would make sense. And also too, when it comes to demolition of buildings, if we're after somebody to demolish, like quote the mayor's words, an a- unsafe building, we shouldn't be tagging them with a five thousand dollar security deposit. We should encourage it. So I do like the improvements. If we had room to adjust the numbers, that would be helpful as well.
Um, sorry, before moving on to Counselor Sorenson, um, Mr. Hamm, were you responding to that comment?
Yeah, I was just going to offer up that we could possibly make a CIO approval in, as a part of this policy or as an extension of this policy so that we, we will have some flexibility in the development office on these.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Counselor Sorenson?
All right, uh, through, um, through the chair to administration, I, I, I have to agree with everyone. This was a long time coming, and it's a great improvement, and I'm really looking forward to it for this year or this change. Uh, I do have a concern with, uh, two point five and two point six, which are kind of the opposite of each, of each other. One is for major and one is for accessory. Um, my, my issue is that two point six discusses risk. And for someone in one of our, um, residents can't necessarily access or determine risk. So my recommendation is for two point six to just clearly say, uh, the, uh, developed area is less than twenty five percent. So the two of them are, are logically opposite of each other, and there's no mention of, um, uh, risk, which is a subjective term. Uh, I recommend that, uh, I do like the fact that four point one three talks about, if it's low risk, we can waive or reduce, um, the deposit, that makes a lot of sense. But determining risk is, um, our development officer's, uh, job, not the public's job to figure out which category they fit in. Um, as well, if I might add, um, we have non-residential major, uh, multi, multi-unit major and multi-unit accessory is defined in the definitions, but we don't have de- a definition for residential development. Um, for instance, I'm unclear if someone tears down, um, a building to the foundation and rebuilds with the same footprint, is that considered, um, a major, minor? I, I, it's just undefined right now, so I would recommend a residential, um, definition as well. Thank you.
Counselor Byer? Or sorry, did anyone in admin want to comment back to those comments from Counselor Sorenson?
Um, through the chair to Counselor Sorenson, I can, um, I can kind of answer that clarification on residential. Um, when we wrote it, I guess we kind of anticipate like, into policy that the residents or the developers are, um, expected to use. It's more of an internal policy that we use and we use to, to, um, apply to them. So when it comes to where it says in two point six, um, in nature with low risk of damage. So the non-residential and residential multi-unit accessory, that speaks to, when we say non-residential, we're meaning commercial and industrial type developments, and we're talking about the accessory developments. So when we have a commercial development that wants to put in a storage shed, um, we, there may be expectations that they require fencing and that we want to make sure that they get those things done. And we still, there's a low risk in the fact that there's, there's not a lot of risk associated uh, in regards to infrastructure, but there's portions of our bylaw that do need to be, um, upheld. So that's where that accessory one comes in with the low risk. And we intended that when we outlined in four one one, residential says that it's a detached dwelling, um, a multi-dwelling up to four units and then a residential accessory building. So it kind of outlines it there. But I can definitely add in a residential, um, definition if that would help for clarity. Cause that's what we're aiming for here, we're aiming for clarification so we can maybe have a policy that we don't have to amend later. Or for a long.
Counselor Sorenson, yeah, thank you. Counselor Sorenson?
Thank you for that clarification that this was not necessarily a public, uh, or not necessarily a front desk document. Um, my, like, I, I get back to two point five and two point six. What if something is more than twenty five percent but low risk? Or what if something is high risk but under twenty five percent? There's a, it, it doesn't fit into either category. So that's my point is that those two are opposite definitions, so they need a very clear definition that you can't fall in between the two of them. Um, thank you.
Counselor Byer?
Thanks, uh, through the chair to administration. When I first read that the title of this is a development permit securities, um, to me, that's a really broad, uh, range. And then it, and then in my mind, or the way, when I read it, it's referring to, um, actual houses, uh, by how I, how I've read it, and, and same thing with our, or how presidential houses or, or commercial properties, um, like kind of major infrastructure. Um, does this not apply to if, if someone, say, doesn't have a paved driveway and they want to build a deck, and then they have to put on a development security and get a development permit and put a security down to pave their driveway? How, how is that different than, than this, um, policy here? I'm, I, I'm just kind of confused between how that would work. Cause I think those amounts are a little bit less.
Uh, through, through, uh, the chair to Counselor Byer. So we were really touching just on the development like you had originally thought, where it's just houses and commercial developments. The paving of driveways is captured under a separate policy. Um, when Bridget and I were writing this, that was something that we did want to consider. Um, but because of Bridget's departure and the amount of other work and other cogs, um, we want to include all of those things on one type of security policy. However, given the time constraints, we really, at this time, need a little more clarity when we're dealing with development specifically, and we deal with driveways and, um, other excavations currently separately. But the intention is there that it would all eventually be collected as one document and be more clearly defined collectively. Uh, right now, we were just looking for more clarity, um, and direction forward so that we can be more development friendly. And, and where Mayor Zahara had said, you know, we have questions all the time. You know, when security amounts are a little too high, sometimes we feel they're too low. It's that lack of discretion that we can't apply because of the way the existing policy is written. Does, is that, um, does that clarify your question?
Uh, yeah, thanks, uh, Ms. Darling, that, that does clarify. I, I didn't see it on there, and then I thought if someone wants to pave their driveway or build a deck and then have to put a, a five thousand dollar security down for us, I thought, oh, that doesn't sound great. But that, that totally clarifies it, so thank you. Um, and I'm in, uh, support of this as well.
Okay, any other questions from counsel? Counselor Sorenson?
Through the chair to, uh, Julia, um, what consti- I'm, I'm, I would like a little bit more clarification on what constitute demolition. Uh, for instance, tearing down a shed, you have to get it, put down a demolition deposit. Um, tearing down a building to its foundation and rebuilding, does that require demolition? Um, removing a roof and rebuilding the roof, is that demolition? Um, I would just like some clarity. Thank you.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Sorenson. Um, so when we talk demolition, we're really more trying to capture, uh, major demolition. So, and that's also where that discretion piece comes in so that I can look at myself and Mitch and the development team. Um, and we always bring in the CIO on these things as well. Um, but we look at the risk associated with it. So if you're demolishing a home and we need to make sure that you're not going to damage our infrastructure, we want to have the mechanism there to have a security deposit to in, ensure our infrastructure's integrity. Whereas if you're tearing down a, a shed that has no power and no, um, no services to it, there's no real risk to anyone else's property other than your own. So that's where we would say, you know, you're, you're removing your garden shed, you don't need a, honestly, if it's a garden shed and it's under ten by ten, it doesn't need a permit anyway. So we look at the land use bylaw and how you require permitting. And then we apply the security deposits based on the types that we've outlined and the risks associated with it. And then use our discretion with the, the, um, the types and layout as you see here. Does that answer your question? Sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Sorenson.
Thank you, it does, it does answer my question and it's, and you said what I expect you, you would say. I do think we should put some wording in here to clarify that, um, so that, uh, the public isn't put off by the site of a two thousand dollar deposit thing they need to do, um, if they want to tear down a deck or something. I, I would recommend just a little extra wording here, and now we're doing it now, I might as well do it. Um, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, sorry, Julia? Julia?
Through the chair to Counselor Sorensen. Just to clarify, so under four point one point one. Under a residential accessory building, we've put in a clause that says exclusions include, but not limited to. We can include that little blurb down underneath demolition. We can do the same thing. Honest, the demolition. Was a, an afterthought because we've been dealing with demolition for so long. It was just. I got a little bit jaded in the fact that it's the one major thing that we've been dealing with in security requests. And it was the one reason we went to rewrite the policy and we, we did all the work to rewrite it and then we completely missed demolition. So. I added it on at the end and I really hoped somebody had some things to say because I added it on and I was like, um, I. I don't know what else to say. We just, we need a different mechanism here. So thanks so much for all your comments and all your kind words.
Perfect. Mayor Sahara? You're on mute.
Yes, thank you once again, Ms. Darling and Mitch and everybody for this. I think this is a marked improvement. And I think we'll have a broader discussion about accessory buildings and focusing our, our energies and our focuses on those things that are most. Most important, like major buildings. And I know that places like White Court, they don't even require you to get a permit for things like sheds and decks and. Fencing, but they do have an enforcement mechanism after the fact if you do it wrong. So. I'm all about reducing red tape and this is a huge step. So thank you so much.
Counselor Sorensen, I'm going to cut you off soon.
Through the chair to administration, as well as the council, I just wanted to point out four point two one. Accepting cash in large sums of money. Real estate industry is in general is moving away as fast as possible from cash, accepting cash on. In large quantities. It puts our staff in a stressful and high-risk situation. And. In reality, no one should be bringing in tens of thousands of dollars in cash into our office. So I would recommend not accepting cash and adding in certified checks to the list. Of acceptable. Ways to fund this deposit. Thank you.
I would agree with that, Counselor Sorensen. Any other comments? All right, I'll just finish off saying, I agree. I think it's fantastic. I mean, I, you know, of course I like to keep red tape around. But if we can get rid of it, let's get rid of it. And I definitely think any clarity we can do on those securities and allowing. We have heard about that lots where people, where it just doesn't make sense. So I do like that. I do like adding though the comment that you had made, Mr. Ham. That maybe just adding in that aspect about C O approval with anything. And I think that would be, I would be comfortable with that being in the area. Of in that twenty to fifty thousand. Range when we're talking about those ones where C O approval. I'm less worried about having the C O approval. In those lower, lower ones, just knowing that, that, that C O approval always does add a little bit of red tape. I know that the C O is around, but it is just that extra step. So I would be okay with that just being in that twenty to fifty thousand bracket. All right. Good. Counselor Sorensen, are you good? Perfect. All right. Moving on to West Edson planning. I believe we have Ms. Chan, Mandy, joining us for this one.
Hello. Good evening, council. So let me just share my screen here. So can everyone see the screen okay and hear me okay? Yes. Okay, awesome. So good evening, council. Sorry, let me just do this. Okay. So good evening, council. Tonight I have prepared a brief presentation on planning in relations to West Edson. So just a brief overview of tonight's presentation. I will start off by providing a background on the topic itself. And then I will kind of go over the planning framework so that we are all familiar with how it works and how that actually applies to our local contacts. After that, I will introduce the proposed timeline in relations to the West Edson related plans. So kind of like what is, what will be coming up in the coming months? And then at the very end, we will be open up for any question that council may have for administration. To facilitate growth in the west end of the town, council directed administration to follow up by bringing planning practices to guide future development. So therefore, over the course of the next few months, administration will be presenting amendments to the existing Edson West area structure plan. And also a new west end neighborhood concept plan. So for this presentation and the report attached, this presentation will be going into like the, the details of the amendments. Because that will be brought forwards in the coming council reports. So this presentation itself will provide an overview of the planning framework and also the timelines and also the process that will take place in the next couple of months. Okay, speaking of the planning, it is important to understand the process that guides planning and also development in Edson. So on this slide here, you can see that the planning, this is the planning framework. And then you probably notice it's like, oh, why is this triangle is actually upside down? So the reason behind it, it's that because the higher up in the triangle you are, the broader you see everything. The amount of the information is also broader. So as you're actually going down through the triangles to the lower area. You actually have the amount of the detail actually increases in a sense. So another way of seeing this is that you can actually imagine yourself like a bird flying in the sky, high, high up in the elevation. So when you're high up in this elevation, you actually see everything on the ground level. You actually see like a broader view, but as, as you're actually flying lower in the elevation, as you're actually closer down to the ground level, you're actually have more detail. So you can actually even like see like what type of building it is. It's like, oh, what type of road it is. So it, it is actually in more detail. So back into the planning framework. So at the very top of the framework, it's the provincial legislation. Which actually usually focus on the management of the crown's land, resources development and also achieving environmental objectives. So as I mentioned, it is very broad in the, in a sense. So the provincial plan actually extends over a very large area covering like many municipalities. And it also applies to a very broad category of land uses to both the public and the private land. So an example of documents within this legislature, provincial legislation is the municipal government act, the M G A. So moving down this planning framework, it's the inter-ministerial development plan, which we can also call it the I D P. It is a high-level statutory documents that joint developed by two or more neighboring municipality. So for our local contacts, it is a joint documents between the Yellowhead County and also the town of Edson. So the I D P actually ensures that the land use decisions within the I D P area are thoughtfully considered. Through a cooperative planning approach to support kind of the long-term interest for both the county and the town. So moving down to the planning framework, one level closer to the ground level, it's the municipal development plan. So this is kind of the, the plan for the town's future. It provides a comprehensive, long-term land use policy. Within what is present right now and also the projected growth and also development that may take place in the town. Moving down to the framework is the area structure plans or it's the area redevelopment plan. So at this moment, the town, we do not have any area redevelopment plans. Here, but we do have several area structure plan. So these plans are actually documents that are actually approved by town council as bylaws. And then the A S P actually provides the, a framework that actually describes the proposed land use. The density of the population sequence of developments. The general location of major road weights. Public utilities in the area and maybe even any additional requirement that council may require for the A S P or A R P. So now you might wonder, it's like, why are there's actually ribbons beside these several plans that I've spoke about? So these ribbons here actually indicates that they are actually statutory documents, statutory plans. Meaning that these plans are actually adopted by municipality in accordance with the M G A. To ensure the effective, long-term growth strategy for the municipality. So furthermore, the M G A also provides that statutory plans adopted by municipality must be consistent with one and other. So as you can see in the framework here, it's like, there's like different levels. So we have to make sure that each plan must be consistent with the plant above it. So in these, and then if there are actually any inconsistency between the different plants, the higher level of the statutory plans. Prevails to the extent of the conflict or inconsistency. So this is kind of something that we will actually have to keep in mind of. So after underneath the area structure plans or area redevelopment plan is the neighborhood concept plan. So, which is also called the N C P. It actually provides a comprehensive documents that will informs and also guides the future redistricting. Or we can also call rezoning and also the subdivisions for plan area. Please note that this is actually not a statutory documents. So adoption of the N C P neighborhood concept plan, it's by resolution and not by bylaw amendments. Further than at the very. Down in the triangle itself is the land use by law and also subdivision in the developments. These are actually more towards the implementations side of planning. So a land use by law defines the largest districts. It also talks about. Like the land uses within each district and the development standard. It also provides the details to evaluate application for developments or subdivision and also acts. As the implementation documents for the statutory plans. So this is kind of an overview of how the planning framework works. So one of the key takeaway message of this planning framework is that alignment between various levels of the document, it's the key. Which is actually one of the reasons why administration will be bringing the A S P amendments forward to council. To ensure that the town statutory documents are actually consistent and aligned with each other. At the top of the hierarchy. And then for our local context wise, for our municipality, the I D P are the top of the hierarchy that we must be in, we must be consistent with. Now applies to planning frameworks to our local contacts. So the image here actually shows the plan of the inter-ministerial development plans, the I D P. So it actually includes the land in the Yellowhead County and also the town of Edson. So basically, it's the plan area is degraded-ish color that you see here. And then it also shows that it, the plan area actually extends northwest of the McCloud rivers to two miles north and west of the town's boundary. So please note that's this Edson inter-ministerial development plan is a regional plan. So meaning that it is a joint plans between Yellowhead County and also the town of Edson. So therefore, it's the adoptions of this plan here at the county was took place in September twenty seventeen. And then it also adopt, this plan was also adopted by Edson's council in October twenty seventeen in the same year. So now moving down to planning framework, it's the municipal development plans. So as shown here, the M D P actually covers areas within the red boundary, which is shown here. The red boundary, which is basically all the lands within the town's boundary. So the plan itself, it's actually called the town of Edson municipal development plan. So this plan had a third reading on December fifteen, twenty fifteen. And then with an effective date of January first, twenty sixteen. So now we're actually more focused in the area. Now we're talking about the area structure plan. So as I mentioned before, Edson does not have area redevelopment plan, but we do actually have seven era structure plan in effect. Which are actually shown in this image here. So I won't go into details of the area structure plan, but you can see that it is actually located, it's kind of like focusing on different area within our town boundary. So please do note that the Bench Creek A S P. Which is in light red here. And then also the Edson West A S P, which is located here. These two plans are actually shared documents with both with Yellowhead County. And then because of the purpose of this presentation, I will talk about the Edson West A S P. It was actually, the third reading of this plan was on October fifteen, twenty thirteen. So now we're one step closer, which is the neighborhood concept plan. As shown on this image here, you can see that the plan are actually more focused within our town boundary. And then it speak to a certain area within the area structure plan, which is actually these, this neighborhood concept plan, it's actually located within the Edson West A S P. So now we can actually connect all the dots together relating to West Edson. So the image on the left here is the inter-ministerial development plans that I've shown in the previous slide. The blue dot here actually indicated the Edson West A S P. So for more detail, I actually zoom in and then you can see it here. The Edson West A S P, it's the dotted line here. And then now we're actually more focused where it's the N C P is located is the west end N C P. So it is actually located within the A S P area. And then so remember how I talk about the planning framework, you go from very, very broad. So it's like the I D P, which is the image on the left. And then you slowly go down more focus, which is kind of, well, there is the M D P. And then more focus into the area here. And then afterwards is the neighborhood concept plan. So you actually get more and more details in a sense. Okay, so to facilitate growth in the west end of the town, administration will be presenting amendments to the existing Edson West A S P area. Area structure plan and also a new west end neighborhood concept plan. As the two plans will be brought forward at different time. Administration will attempt to make the process as clear as possible by providing all the related details in the future council reports. So this is kind of on the slide here is kind of like the timelines on proposed on what will be coming up next. So first of all, we will have our first reading of the Edson West A S P amendments that will be taking place in January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. So during that meeting, council will be setting out the public hearing date. And then after that, load of notification will be sent to affected landowner after the first reading. So that's, that will be actually next week. And then so if council approved the date, so the public hearing of the Edson West A S P will actually take place on February sixteenth. During here. And then later on that, on the same evening, second reading of the Edson West A S P will also be taking place. So that's kind of on the A S P side, having public engage, ah, sorry, public hearing and then the second reading. And then actually on the same evenings, on the same meeting, the west end neighborhood concept plan will also be presented by. By Infisact, which is actually the consultant that have been working on this plan specifically. So just a reminder, that's the N C P neighborhood concept plan. It's not a statutory documents. So therefore, there are no public hearings needed for this plan. And also adoption of the N C P is by resolution and not by bylaw amendments. So although there are no public hearings for the N C P. Please do note that the landowner has been fully engaged by Infisact, the consultants throughout the process in creating this N C P documents. So during the same meetings, there will be the decision made on regarding on the N C P itself. So if the third reading was not taking place on February sixteenth, where it's the same evening that I'm talking about. The A S P will actually bring to council for a third reading on March second, twenty twenty one. So this is kind of an overview of the proposed timeline that we have right now and then we're, and then. We're okay for any questions regarding on it. So as a recap on why administration is bringing this A S P amendments forwards. So it is because there are misalignments with the upper plan based on the planning framework that I've talked about. Remember it's the upside down triangle. So we have to make sure there are alignments between the upper, with the upper plans, which is the I D P in our sense. So as per the M G A, consistency is the key for the statutory plans. So therefore, it is administration responsibility to ensure those are. So therefore it is administration responsibility to ensure those are actually met. Also for the Edson air Edson West area structure plan, um please do note that it is actually a regional plan joined with Yellowhead County. So administration have been working with county administration on this and then we kind of have all the comments incorporate and make sure that the it is ready to go. So the date of the amendments of the timelines may be different from the county as because the coun- um council meeting dates are actually different between us and the county. However, the ASP amendments will be bring forwards at county council meeting, just to make sure that's that will go forward. So this is kind of an overview of the planning framework, just understand how that actually applies to our local context. And what are actually some of the process that of the amendments that will be coming up soon in a couple of months. So thank you for your attention and now we are actually open up for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh Mandy. That was a fantastic, uh very informative and detailed presentation. For anyone who is watching, if you don't know, Mandy is a part of our municipal internship program that you have heard many of us advocate about and what they bring to the organization and how beneficial they are. And I just think it's really important for us to point out that that is, this is why we want them. That was a really, really well done and thank you. I will open it up to council for questions and comments. Uh councillor Sorrenton.
Thank you through the chair to Ms. Chan. Thank you very much. That's a great presentation. I do have a question, a couple of questions. Is it, I'm surprised we're not, there's no schedule to see these two plans in a council meeting, a committee of a whole meeting to discuss the details of it. Is that not appropriate or I'm just not clear why we're not seeing the details of it before it comes to council?
Um through the chairs to councillors Sorrenton, um because those are amendments um for actually maybe Mr. Ham would be able to help me out a little bit in responding to this.
Yeah, just with the amendment nature of the ASP, we we thought that we could go to the first reading immediately, but we were happy to bring um any of the adjustments toward to the committee of a whole meeting preemptively.
If I may just, I that would, I think that would benefit me a lot to see it in a committee of a whole meeting. And then the other point so well presented was that the A the ASP supersedes the NCP. And so I'm confused why you would approve the NCP a week before the ASP. That doesn't make sense to me. Maybe someone can clarify.
Do you want to take that, Mandy?
I can give it a try for the chairs to cancel it. Sorrenton, um because of that, because for the NCP itself, it's not a statutory documents. So it's actually adopted by resolutions only, so it's not by in bylaw amendments. And then also with the third reading of the documents, it can be, it can be happening on um February sixteen, which is where everything that evening will be talked about. So that's kind of on that can be adjust in a sense.
Thank you. Uh councillor Shannard.
Thanks, Mandy, for your presentation. I have one question asked first before I ask any questions. This neighborhood thing on the West End, does that affect south of sixteen or only north of sixteen?
In in reference to highway sixteen, the neighborhood concept plan specifically deals with the area north of highway sixteen, but the area structure plan is both north and south in the in the um imagery that was offered.
Okay, um am I still live?
Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, um then, okay, I was at the neighborhood watch concept and the dates and we're looking at the first reading, being at the meeting, a lot of the red, all of the landowners were there and they had changes they want done. And they asked if it was possible that we could have a meeting with councillor, going back to councillor Sworn- Sworntson with COVID and stuff, can we delay this and move it further in to let them have an opportunity to have their say?
Through this chair to uh councillor Shannard. We are met with some timelines and with the cares grant surrounding the neighborhood concept plan. So we we do not have an unlimited amount of time here. We've had two extensions on the cares grant that supports the neighborhood concept plan. And uh and with with working with this in conjunction with the county, um we we do want to limit the delays as much as possible. Um in addition to that, the the resident concern or the landowner concerns are are of our concern as well and uh and we want to work with them through those. Um but we do have to meet um the needs of compliance and of 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 um current planning practices. So we uh we are working with the landowners through this, but there is, there are some timelines that need to be met uh through our through our cares grant. Hope that answers.
Thank you.
Do I have um, am I allowed to respond to that?
Yep.
Okay, uh yes, I fully appreciate the grants, but I don't want to put something in stone because it affects them and it's to their advantage or disadvantage. And being at the meeting uh that was there, they had some great concerns. So I don't want to put them in jeopardy, meaning that it comes before council and we set rules that they disagree with. I would like the opportunity, if we can delay it, that we could meet somehow meet with all of council through Zoom, whatever with the property landowners. Because uh being at the meeting, I was there because I'm a West End and I wasn't aware if it was north or south. But I did hear their concerns and the biggest concern they had is they wanted to meet with all of council. And I said, I don't know, I will bring it up when it comes to their our attention. And I believe all of council should be able to hear their concerns before we vote and move forward with this.
Um, just just to that point, um Mandy, can you clarify? Obviously, we haven't seen the amendments. In your presentation, it did sound to me that, and I know that these are coming, but are the majority of the amendments that are coming necessities based on following the levels of structure with actually like, that was my understanding in that presentation is that these are amendments that aren't options. Most of like, are there a lot that are options? Because my understanding is actually about the MGA and the flow of what we, we don't have a choice about following. Like the actual government frameworks that were shown. So can you just talk to that for me, please?
Um, yes, through the chair. Um, so it is, so the amendments that I'll be bringing forwards, it's actually relates to the latest revision of the IDP. So we do notice there are some changes there and then we so we will be kind of doing amendments in accordance to make us make sure that's it is inconsistent. It is actually consistent with the IDP. And also we will kind of update any general like planning practices that might be suitable in the sense, because when we're actually doing uh amendments, because the document itself have been completed a long time ago. And then now we can actually incorporate some of the planning um practices that into make sure such as making sure that there are actually like environmental assessments that are actually completed prior any subdivision or development. So those type of the policy will be added as well, just to additions to. And then but the majority, the major concerns is to make sure that it is actually falling into alignments with the um through the hierarchy itself.
Perfect. Thanks. Councillor Wilkinson.
Uh, sue the chair. Uh, you know, we have to meet government regulations. We can clearly see that. Uh, I was just wondering when we're going to ever have a meeting with Yellowhead County, like they're saying twenty seventeen. The last inter municipal meeting I remember going to was held at the rec center. And it's very beneficial for both councils to meet and discuss this. I can't see how we can be going down to a lower level when we haven't done the top level yet. And we truly haven't. We need to meet with Yellowhead County and decide that. I think we need to put a hold on some of these things. And as far as that West End neighborhood concept plan, this was a new plan that was presented to them by these new consultants that we have. Leaving a water reservoir right in front of one of people's properties, so they would never have frontage like. And many suggestions were given by the residents out there, which I do think that we need to take into account. And if we're rushing this to do it right away, I we're not taking, uh, we couldn't possibly revise it so that it would suit the needs. And I know it doesn't make any difference to us if every resident out there is united or are united and decide not to cooperate with anything. But why would we want that when we're representing taxpayers? I think we all need to work together and get this worked out from the top down. And that's having an inter municipal development meeting first and working our way down. Thank you.
Mr. Ham.
Okay, I'm going to try and respond to all this. Um, for starters, um, the the uh landowners will be able to engage with the ASP amendments at the public hearing and that and that is a place where they can engage with council on on the topics, which is a lot of the reason why Mandy's brought this information forward for us to discuss so that we inform council on with the best practices and 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 the and and understand our limitations with with the best practices of planning. Secondly, to refer to your initial comment, councillor Wilkinson, um the currently the inter municipal development plan is is not being renegotiated and and the guiding principles that you that you led into the twenty seventeen IDP is the exact same principles that we're working with today. So it's, so we're not, we're not changing the practices of the IDP. This is specific to amending the ASP to update it with with current planning practices. And then lastly, with the neighborhood concept plan and and the concerns of the landowners, I can, I can assure you that we have engaged with the landowners through this process. And and the growth of this process and and how it moves forward is is going to be very much up to the landowners. But I can tell you that the solution of moving drainage off of their property onto someone else's property is just not feasible from a planning perspective, an environmental perspective or a municipal perspective. So it's, it's something that we when we're moving forward here, this is not a rushed um job. This has been something that we've been working on for a very long time and we have, we have, we have used up all of our extensions for this, this grant process. And if we do not complete the NCP by June, we'll have to pay back the cares grant.
I'd like to reply if I could. First off, the water reservoir has been changed from the original plan to now. It has been changed. So when you were saying it couldn't be changed, well, it has been and that's one of the biggest problems there. And we don't review a four-year-old document before we start working our way down. That really surprises me. And Mandy, I must say, I really neglected. You did a beautiful job of presenting this. You really did. And if you don't mind sending me your slides, I really appreciate it. That was very clear. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Parsons, Ms. Parsons would like to add into this.
I would, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that one thing I think we can do without um putting things off too much is um is to have these documents also go to the committee meetings as councillor Sorrenton had stated. So the residents um and council will be able to interact with those documents at the committee meeting before they go to the council meeting. Um, I don't think that would delay us pass the cares grant to do that, um Mitch. If, or sorry, Mr. Ham, it um correct me if I'm wrong about that. But that's something we could do and then council would be able to see any input that might come in from the committee meetings, you know, in between um from any residents that were had concerns.
Um, I think Ms. Parsons, uh it was coming to our council meeting next week.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm right with my timelines.
Sorry, y- yes, that's what was in the presentation, but I just was saying I'm not, and Mr. Ham can correct me if I'm wrong, but if council would feel more comfortable, we could probably push that a week and we could just bump those timelines by one week instead.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and question to you, Mr. Ham, uh one is that, would that still fit within the cares grant? To bump it back?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, we, it will definitely fit within the framework. The the caution that I will give you right now is that every delay is going to push us closer and closer to deadlines. So we need to be very cautious of which delays we we wanted to partake in. In that we 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 can simply slip to June quite quickly if we if we start pushing off process after process. So I I I do agree with councillor Sorrenton that we should, that we can bring this to to a committee of a whole to have a discussion and 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 have a broader discussion and and move on from there for sure. But I I definitely caution um extending the process.
Um, I do have a question, Ms. Ham, just related to what was discussed there. Do you know what the norm is for how often an IDP is updated? And do you know, is the county even interested in looking at that document? To update?
To respond simply, um, and I'll let Mandy follow up when I'm finished here, but um the what triggers a an amendment to a document of this nature is 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 updating in like at the legislative level and and best planning practices. Whether it be law planning practices or or just updates in planning practices. But um it it's not something that you want to engage in um very often and and I'll and from here I'll let Mandy um fill you in.
Um, so the IDP itself, it actually, it is the, out of all the documents we have, it is actually the latest version of the documents that has been updated. So therefore, I believe the chances that we will update that documents might be because we we still have need time to make sure all the other documents there. So maybe yeah, so it it will kind of, it will be take several years against before it will be amendments on the IDP again.
Councillor Byer.
Thanks, uh through the chair to administration, um maybe to man, uh Ms. Chan. Um, maybe I'm a little unclear. Um, so we have the public hearing on February sixteenth along with um a bunch of other things happening that day. So would the residents or the landowners uh of that area have the opportunity to speak at that time? Before everything else is done, because I I'm I'm just wondering if that's not the most appropriate time for them to speak. Um, and and if we were to have something brought to a committee, if we went, had the first reading happen on January nineteenth as proposed, if there any, if there was any reason why we couldn't have a committee meeting after that to have um landowners speak if if that was the best way to do that. Um, I don't think having a passing a first reading, um that that doesn't secure us or or force us forward to a third reading. My understanding, I don't know if I'm, if you're understanding what I'm trying to ask. Uh, I'm just not quite sure I I understand why we couldn't have the landowners speak at the public hearing. That's all.
Um, so through the chairs to councillor, um Byer. So um because of the public hearing with our agenda for um for meetings, um public hearing is actually usually at the very beginning of the agenda. So therefore, um landowner, um when we have public hearings, the landowner will be able to talk to regarding on to like, talk about any concerns that they have. So I believe there will be time for them to talk about before it, we went forward with these second readings in the sense. And sorry, what was, can you read? Yes, was there a second questions that I can follow up on?
I I think you got it. Did she, did she answer that all that you needed there, councillor Byer?
Yes, she did. Thanks.
Mayor Sahara.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Mandy. Just a wonderful uh presentation. Very well done. I guess my concern through to administration is, is we're talking about something I don't even know what we're talking about because I haven't seen uh the neighborhood concept plan and I'm not willing to start making decisions on something that I'm not very well versed in. I also um think that we are, I am, correct me if I'm wrong here, but when we're talking about the amendments to the area structure plan and the IDP, this is basically cleanup. It's not changing really anything. It just to update it to current language and that sort of thing. Is that, is that my, is that a correct understanding or is there more to it than that?
Um, through the chairs to Mayor Sahara. So um we're actually not making changes on the IDP. We're actually trying to make it alignments to the IDP itself. And then, and then for sure, yeah, that's the only things that we're making sure of, just to make sure that there are alignments between the documents with our IDP that are actually more latest version. Yes.
Okay, so uh so there's a, and I guess this is where it gets confusing. We have a lot of little pieces working here, which are all all connected, but they're different. To me, the the changes or the alignments we're doing, I don't think that's a big issue uh to me from a first blush without knowing the details. I think it's just a cleanup. But the neighborhood concept plan, I think this is where the issue is, is I don't know what that looks like. I don't know what the concerns are. I don't know what's I don't know what the concerns are. I don't know what's been discussed. And until I actually see the plan, I'm not willing to engage in a process to approve or not approve it. And further to that, once we have that briefing, if it's at a committee meeting, because it's by resolution, we can amend that down the road too if we need to. So we can meet those grant deadlines and adjust it based on the feedback we're receiving. And the final comment I would make is, and I would just caution that the public hearing will be for the for the statutory measures and not for the NCP. So it'd be improper for me to, as the chair, to engage in that because that is a separate process, which I think we need to have a more fulsome discussion. Correct me if I'm wrong, administration, if if I'm off key with any of that, but I think that we need to maybe separate those two issues, even though they are aligned and they are connected to one another. I think the the alignments, I I don't have the concern with that. I think it's just a cleanup of the Neighborhood Concept Plan. I think we need to get more details on.
Counselor Wilkinson.
I just have one question for Ms. Chan. When that Investec planning come to present to us, have they incorporated any of the suggestions that they were given from the residents of that area? Have they changed the plan at all?
Through the chairs to Counselor Wilkinson. So after the the open house that we actually, we both attended, so Investec did kind of incorporates the, some of the comments they have. But I believe the plans did not modify because we did actually ask for engineering's advice on it regarding on any changes. And I think right now as the plan is presented, that's kind of the best, that's, that's a plan that have incorporates all the engineering best best practices and also the planning best practices in the plan itself.
Well, unfortunately then, because it was engineered differently before, we won't have a support from any one of those residents. They were quite clear. If it stayed the same, they were banding together and no support given at all. So I guess I think we have to come to a compromise somewhere. I don't know how, but we have to look into it. If we're just presenting the same report, you're going to get exactly the same results.
Mr. Ham.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, Counselor Wilkinson, I, the, I understand your position with the landowners. Where where administration is is struggling for direction here is that we're working with 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 current planning law and practice and current environmental practice, legislative practice, practice through MGA, we're, we're working through all these documents and and we're not, we're not engaging the landowners to tell them how they can operate their land. We're giving them direction on how their land can be used in in the future. And and it is, it is truly up to them to define their their needs based on the documents that we provide. So I I do believe that we can come to consensus on this. It just, it just takes a better descriptive for our landowners to to understand.
Well, I think six years ago, they had a different plan, which they had agreed to. Our former town manager Clarence worked a long time working with those residents out there. And they did have a plan when I first was on council. And then now that it's changed, and when one of them gets totally shafted with that water in front of them, I think that's what's changed their whole minds about it, that they don't want anything to do with it if it's going to be against the one family. And good for them.
Mrs. Parsons, Ms. Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to council, I think we can, I think we can go with what the mayor is saying here and that I think we need to get these documents in front of council so that they can look at them, discuss them. Administration can present why they look the way they do and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Any changes that maybe were made since the open house, if any, or those, you know, small ones that administration might be able to speak to. So at the, you know, it's scheduled to go forward at the February 16th council meeting, but that is not necessarily set in stone. And there are a few committee meetings prior to that. So I don't see why we couldn't get that in front of council at a committee meeting prior to then and see how that conversation goes and then go from there. Because we don't have those documents in front of us, so we could just keep talking in circles about these, but might as well, might as well get them out there and then be able to talk about them.
I I agree. I think we do need to see the documents. I do, and I'm sorry, Mandy, I'm getting a little confused with all the different names and stuff. I do still would like clarity, like the Wets, Edson West Area Structure Plan amendments that we were looking at on the 19th. Those are all to align to the, sorry, IDP.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So those have nothing to do with the changes to the actual structural plan?
Uh, no, those, those are just in lines with the IDP itself.
Just purely aligned. This is where I think we're getting caught up in this because to me, that is something that is like, that's something, that's not nonnegotiable to us. If it doesn't match our other government documents, then that is our role to ensure that that happens sooner than later. That to me is us not doing our due diligence if it didn't align in the first place. So I think we're getting caught up on that Neighborhood Concept Plan, which does not come. And we have, like, that's January 19th, which is all about the IDP and getting that to align versus where, when we're talking about the Neighborhood Concept Plan that everybody, I I'm assuming that is what everybody is struggling with, with the owners. That's not on the agenda till February 16th. So we have, looking at the calendar, we have time to discuss that in detail at our, and I agree with you, Mayor Harris, there, I think these are kind of going together and they are together, but they're also not. So I just, as far as that first reading goes, I just think there is something to be said about. That is not something that we're talking, it's, the amendments we're discussing are nonnegotiable. I also would like a little, not much has been said so far about where is the county planning aligning with this? And what are their thoughts on it?
So to the chair, so I have been connecting with the county administration on it. So I have actually sent my, sent them my amendments and then they kind of review and then they also give, give me like their feedback and also amendments on their side. So basically, the ASP amendments has been connected with both the county and us and to make sure that it is good to go. And then I have also did speak with administration there, that's our proposed timelines. And then because of the council difference meeting dates, so that kind of, I think they're kind of one week behind-ish. I can, I actually need to confirm on that. So there will be kind of like a difference on the gap, but they are actually moving forward with the amendments. And it seems like that administration are good with the comments and the amendments that I have drafted to.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselors Sorenson.
Through the chair to council, I, I believe I'm agreeing with the mayor. I I believe that it's going to be very easy for the public to get the two levels, document levels confused. So I think it would be better, in my opinion, to have the ASP dealt with almost entirely in one day. And then having the NCP on a separate day, just for clarity. Thank you.
I would also support that. I do think that it'll, I think that it'll cause and people will get involved in the AS, ASP in ways that it actually, they, they don't get it. Unfortunately, a lot of that is government regulated. So that is not something they actually get to necessarily get involved with. Mayor Sahara.
Yeah, so I I agree with what what's been said here and I just want to clarify, there's never been a Neighborhood Concept Plan for that area. There has been an area structure plan, and I think that's where maybe some of that confusion is coming in. So this NCP, and I want to be very clear, the NCP is usually paid for by those landowners. And in this case, the town of Edson said, hey, we, we're going, we're willing to take the lead on this to help because we know there's been issues in the West End and all kinds of things. Without these documents, nobody can develop anything and it doesn't help anybody. So I think we also need to keep that in mind, but we also need to hear the concerns of those landowners. There's a lot of history there and there's a lot of, I would say, apprehension and mistrust possibly. But having said that, we need to find consensus, we need to move forward, we need to understand that without these documents, nobody, the town isn't going to move forward, the the developers out there or the landowners are not going to be able to move forward. So, but but for us, for as a council, to make any kind of comments or decisions or any understanding, I need to know what the heck we're talking about in terms of what that document looks like. So Mr. Ham and Mandy, I look forward to that discussion. And I think it's really important that we disconnect the NCP from from the other process because we could be in a world of her here, not having those things aligning and then deal with that that NCP separately. And if we end up defeating it, we defeat it or we we move forward with it. But that's just my general comment. I don't know, Mr. Ham or Ms. Bittner or Mandy, if you have anything you'd like to add to that.
Through the chair, thank you, Mayor. That's I I wholeheartedly agree. I think that it's, we're kind of on an unfair playing field because some people are more familiar with the documentation than others. So we can, we can bring the ASP back to a committee of a whole is what I've heard and and have a discussion there and then move it to a council meeting from there.
All right. Are we good on that then?
Is everybody agreement with that plan?
Good to go. And I I would just say, I think if we're bringing it to a committee, I would also support just doing the three readings in one night. That's what I'm just saying, so we can move that process and I'm moving that forward. Look, we have new counselors. They look much fresher and younger, more alive. All right.
No gray hair.
Mr. Ham, no gray hair. They don't have COVID hair. Mr. Ham, you have, and Mandy, you have everything you need from us. Perfect. All right, moving on. Do we have any questions, Ms. Parsons? Do we have any questions from media and public regarding items from this committee of the whole meeting?
I have not received any.
Okay, perfect. Then I am looking for a motion for adjournment. Oh, Counselor Shannard, I'll give it to you. All those in favor? Motion carried. Have a great night, everyone.